Jim Lettis, now you ready? Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
For board comment?
All right, we're all set. All the lights are on, everything's good. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Ed meeting. The date is Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and is it a beautiful spring day out there? Ellen, can you please, first, I'd appreciate if you turn off your cell phones. Thank you, John, as this meeting is being recorded. And Ellen, will you please do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Callan-Carson?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Present.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Walters?
Present.
Mr. Weiner?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Board Chair, Mrs. Granato?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Angelica Data?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And Teacher Sue Coco, would you come up with your students Dylan and Sam to do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Don't go too far. Okay, Mr. Emmett, tonight we have student and staff recognition. I think we got a glimpse.
We do. We did get a glimpse. If I could please have Ms. Coco, Ms. Charvino, and Mr. Seer, please come back up. We have some budding architects over at Weathersfield High School, so we're going to talk a little bit about what they've done.
Hi, I'm Sue. Just brought a couple of my students here. Last week, we competed in the statewide competition at the home show. It's a youth design contest through the Home Builders and Remodelers Association. Statewide, there were 16 schools that participated in it, and we had eight participants from our school. And I brought Sam and Dylan. Sam won second place in this competition. She earned a $600 check, along with a $750 scholarship, and their work is really impeccable. Dylan is a future architect as well, and he's a junior that shares Sam's will be graduating. So I wanted to have them just share a little bit about their experience. The whole process really works into the vision of the graduate with their problem-solving, collaborating, communicating with that. It was fun to watch them the last couple of days before the project and having them all help each other, even though they're competing against each other. It was really nice to see them come together, so.
Hi, I'm Dylan Seer. My house is supposed to be kind of like a lake house. Doing this competition really meant a lot to me because I have a big interest in architecture, and I find, like, being able to do this, I was able to meet so many new people, talk to a lot of people that are involved in the field, which I think is really important because it allowed me to actually get some exposure and open my point of view to this field and get more involved. So I'm very, very thankful for the opportunity. I'm definitely doing it next year. Thank you.
Dylan, which one's here? This one right here?
Yeah, that one right there.
That's beautiful.
Dylan, actually, at the home show, they, we had a luncheon that the kids were able to speak with industry professionals, and you did a lot of networking. And he's working on an internship. You were able to talk with, you're the one who talked with Jack Kemper, who's the architect? So Jack Kemper, you guys remember Home Edition, Extreme Makeover, Home Edition? So he was the architect for that, and he comes and he's been judging at these competitions. So Dylan did a really good job networking, and hopefully something will come out of that one.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Sam Charvino. My house is the dark blue one. I worked really hard. I started this last semester, and I didn't actually get into Coco's sixth-period Architecture II class. It was taken up by my physics class. So I came in during all of my free periods, my lunch period, my study halls, and after school when I could. I started with my interior designing and stuff because I liked that a lot. My computer actually crashed and deleted almost 90% of my house, so I had to start from scratch halfway through. But I worked really hard, and I'm so happy that I got second. I worked so hard, all the gluing, my hands were burned, my little pieces broke. I've actually committed to Roger Williams in Bristol, Rhode Island, for architecture and their accelerated master's program. So I plan on studying and majoring in architecture and then getting my master's degree in preservation and restoration. So this was definitely very helpful for getting me into the career that I planned on because I hadn't taken any other classes related to architecture or anything like that other than construction. So it was very fun. I liked it. I like to be creative. I also spoke to one of the people who were judging. I don't remember his name, but he is on the committee for the Hartford Preservation Committee. So I talked to him a little bit about, like, how to get into the job and internships. They do have some of those. I might be looking into that soon, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes.
I just want to say congratulations to you both, and thank you both for coming in here and sharing your work with us. This is tremendous. This looks awesome, and it sounds like you had a great experience. Question, what are you going to do with the $600?
It's going to go to college with the $750.
Idea. Nice work to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wait, 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 wait. We're not done yet. Come on back.
I just wanted to say, I was kind of trying to figure out which one I would love. I would love both of them for different reasons, but thank you for reminding us while we're up here. Your student work and your engagement to the community and the ability to connect what you love to do and engage that in the classroom, that's amazing. I have so many students that sometimes will do that in their own time, so that's awesome. And Ms. Coco, you're just so amazing with your timeless energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd love to. So what an amazing job. I'm looking at all the different pieces that you have put together, all the detail that goes into this, and I can't even imagine how burned your fingers may have been or the slice and all of that. But clearly, you both have an eye for unbelievable craftsmanship and innovation, and it's just fantastic. I also, you know, I think it's great, Dylan, that you were able to connect with people in the field to talk about, like, future opportunities for yourself, just learn a little bit more about their careers. It definitely helps. I know that's one of the things that Weathersfield Public Schools always strives for, is to help prepare the students for the future as part of the vision of the graduate. So that was great to hear. And along the lines of, you know, connecting and increasing your network, did you say the Hartford as in the Hartford Insurance Company? No, just. The Hartford Preservation. Okay. I work for the Hartford. I was going to say, I will make some phone calls for you and see what we can do. Okay, but congratulations, just amazing work. Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would just like to say, if you can put that much time into something like this and get a job in architecture someday, you'll never work a day in your life. You're just going to love it. So congratulations and good luck.
Thanks.
Awesome. Okay, next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our regular Board of Ed meeting on February 25th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's move on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes pass. And now, is there anyone, come back? Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address. May I remind you that you have a five-minute limit, and another reminder, the board members will not be responding to comments. I hope you understand that. Thank you.
So I'm here for a reason you might not think I'm here for.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, Paula Sola, 32, Hartford Ed. I have had five children in the Weathersfield School District, two of which are in college. One is a junior at the University of Vermont, getting a 4.0 in the nursing program. My next daughter is at University of Connecticut in the data science program, and she's excelling. I have a seventh grader who has straight A's at the middle school. I have a freshman in high school who is thriving in honors classes and the big adjustment to high school. I'm here to talk about my 17-year-old son, Cole. Some of you know him from elementary school. When he was younger, he had some delayed language, and we had him in the birth-to-three program. We tried to get him into the peer playmate program over at Webb, but I guess at the time he wasn't disabled enough. As we began our elementary school education with him, I could fundamentally tell something was different in the way he learned, the way he read, the way he jumbled words. And as I approached the school, I was told, he's just a boy. You can't compare him to his older sisters. They mature earlier. And they'd give him a little bit of assistance. They'd get him to a point where they said, oh, he doesn't need any services, he's doing great. And the next year, it was a repeat, and a repeat, and a repeat, until in fifth grade, we had a new principal at Hamner. My wife and I went into her office and said, I will not leave until you agree to have my child tested. And we spent about three hours with her poring over all of his records, where, at which point, she agreed. Now, you can imagine somebody who doesn't understand what's going on around him and the behavior issues and the acting up and the self-esteem implications of all of that. And through his testing, they identified that he had a processing issue. And he went into an IEP, which my wife was here, she knows all the acronyms, and he began getting assistance. I had to personally transition his information from the elementary school to the middle school. They were just going to let it happen naturally. In middle school, he also received services. I again had to transition his services from the middle school to the high school because it didn't happen organically. And they had him in a program called structured reading, which is decoding and encoding. At the end of his freshman year, in one sentence, they're telling us he's reading at a fifth-grade level. In the next sentence, they're saying where he's met all of his goals in structured reading. And we were like, that's great, what's next? Crickets, emails. They had no additional service to help him. For those of you who have met my son, he's very intelligent. He's smart, he's funny, he intellectualizes things, he just learns differently than others. The school refused. John's special education program refused any additional services. My family and I had to spend $5,000 on a neuropsych. During that, they identified dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, and it gave them, the school, a foundation to build from. I spent $29,000 in legal fees to get him the help that he deserves in the public school system, that John is responsible for the special education program, and that you are all shepherds of. Coming into this year, her first PPT without a lawyer, guess what the recommendations are? To cut his services. It's a shame. The program that my son was in had a profound impact on his ability and how he progressed so rapidly in his learning and reading, his writing, his processing. I know there's hundreds of kids in the school system who could benefit from that. All it takes is one staff, one class, one resource. You guys have to think, rethink your special education program because not everybody can afford a total of $34,000 that I have paid independently to get my son to read beyond a fifth-grade level, which the Weathersfield School System was totally fine with. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Carolyn Fazina. I am, you might know, I'm the director of the Keen Enrichment Programs here in Weathersfield. This being the month of March, and of all things green, I think there's no better time to announce the first of our five after elementary school musicals starring your favorite Ogre Shrek. There's 24 students who are participating at High Crest this year. The performances will be March 14th, this Friday at 7:00, and Saturday, March 15th at 2:00. I'm just going to give these to Ellen, and she can share them with you. Tickets can be bought at the door, also via Venmo. It's at High Crest PTO if you want to buy them ahead. So I encourage, I hope you guys can come and see these fine actors in action. So just wanted to give a quick shout-out and hope to be back sometime shortly with all the really great stuff we have going on as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to put that over there. All right, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Emmett, you have some communications to share.
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates for you this evening. We continue the work in the process of selecting the next principal of Charles Wright Elementary School. This afternoon, Mrs. Distoli and myself had the pleasure of going over to Charles Wright and doing a staff focus group. So we spent about 40 minutes with the staff. We got some excellent feedback. This couples with the recent parent focus group that we conducted last week, week before. I will be going out again on Friday to meet with students. I certainly want to get the student perspective, so I'm looking forward to meeting with students on Friday as we continue the process. We are north of 50 applicants up to this point in time, so again, the expectation is we'll have a principal in place at Charles Wright for July 1st. We're also currently working on the IT supervisor position, so we will be meeting tomorrow with the hiring team for round two. We have a couple of candidates that have moved forward, so we're looking to get that position filled as soon as possible. Had the opportunity last week to attend the ninth, I can't believe I'm saying it, the Ninth People Empowering People, PEP, group. This was a grassroots effort that started long ago to build capacity and leadership capabilities among our parents. And I cannot tell you the number of parents that have taken on projects, that have ultimately worked for the school system in a variety of different capacities. It's an outstanding program headed up by Kim Bobbin, Janine Barassi, and Jessica Koelo. I had the opportunity to meet with all moms this time around, and all moms of elementary students. Actually, had one parent living across the river in Glastonbury who has a friend here in Weathersfield who's part of the process, and she asked if she could come along. So it was nice to get to meet them and spend some time, spent a couple hours with them last week. So looking forward to their projects and then the PEP graduation coming up in the spring. We have an exciting bit of news. You probably got an email today. Governor, I keep saying Malloy. Governor Lamont, thank you very much, Governor Lamont, will be attending Weathersfield High School this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. along with Attorney General Tong to talk about cellphone usage and decreasing the usage of cellphones in schools. As you know, over the course of the summer, we had the Anxious Generation Book Club, and we've really taken on the idea of finding times and places when we can effectively use social media and cellphones and when they really should be put away. So that's coming up on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. I know that logistically, the team at the high school worked today on that. I notified Mr. Bearbault, shaking his head in the back corner of the council chambers. So we have a plan in place. If you are planning on attending, board members, please let us know, just so that we have a head count and it makes it easier for Mike to get everybody in. So we're expecting several other dignitaries as well. It'll be in the library at Weathersfield High School, so we're certainly looking forward to that. Again, Governor Lamont coming in on Thursday. As Carolyn had mentioned with regards to the musicals, we have multiple musicals across all of our schools. I had the honor of attending Hello, Dolly. I actually snuck in to see it twice. Last week, the high school did a dress rehearsal for our theater group from Silas Dean Middle School, and they did a question-and-answer session after, and it was really interesting to hear the comments and the questions that came from the students. There's a level of enthusiasm that was palpable, and it certainly was a nice event. Our middle school students are actually performing this week, Beauty and the Beast, so we've got all of our sixth graders as part of the transition to middle school. Our sixth graders are going to be visiting two days this week to see the performance as well as get a tour and have lunch at the middle school. So we're certainly looking forward to that. Again, to all of our thespians at Weathersfield High School, I can't say how proud I am of you all. It was absolutely stunning to watch. The talent is just immense. I know how much work goes into it, and, you know, it was interesting, after the performance on Friday, I happened to see a few cast members out in the cafeteria on my way out, and they were lamenting over the fact they only had a couple performances left. It has a huge impact, whether it's the architecture you see in front of you this evening, it's the theater, it's sports, it's academics, it's what Weathersfield Public Schools are all about. So again, congratulations to everybody. And then also, want a couple other things. I am dealing with a heating issue over at Hamner currently, so we had a heat pump that failed last night. So we had some space heaters in this morning to get the area in the primary wing warmed up, so we were able to get through the day fine, no issues today. The heat pump was replaced. I understand now a valve is now a culprit and is a problem, so that will be replaced tomorrow. So in the meantime, we expect to have the space heaters out first thing in the morning. Thankfully, we are not dealing with really cold temperatures, or otherwise, we'd be thinking otherwise. So also, just a quick message to everybody, Community and Public Relations Committee, we did send a revised agenda. The time for tomorrow night over at the Stillman Building has changed from 6:00 p.m. to 5:40 p.m. Just want to make a note of that. Okay? And that's communications.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Tonight, we have two action items. Marjorie, can you please read Recommended Motion 6A for us?
Sure. This is going to be a long one. Recommend a move that the Weathersfield Board of Education pursuant to CGS Section 12-21F5F certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education was comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeteria, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. And further moved that the Weathersfield Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And number three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsal, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Background, this is an annual requirement by the Connecticut State Department of Education, and there's an attached memorandum, Connecticut State Educational Operational Memorandum Number 03-25 for reference.
Thank you for reading that. Okay. Can I have a second? Second, thank you. Any discussion on this? Michael, anything on it?
Yeah, we adhere to this on a yearly basis, so just to give you a quick example, Friday night with the musical, they ended up having a, like a snack bar during intermission. That, because of the fact it's outside of the school day, would be allowed to have candy or, you know, outside, not your typical healthy snacks. So again, we have always adhered to that. We want to make sure our kids are healthy, and we want to make sure that our kids are getting the best possible nutrition. So this will be upon your approval this evening, the minutes will be sent off to the State Department of Education to verify that we're all set for the '25-'26 school year.
Okay, any more discussions?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, I believe it's Section 10, not Section 12. I think the wrong section was read. So I'd like to make amended motion so that it's, we're adhering to CGS Section 10 and not 12. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. You can run it, but there's time for discussion if people think I was wrong, but I'm pretty sure I was right.
Excuse me, was it Ms. Red?
It was Ms. Red.
Okay, I thought we had the.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought we had the wrong piece in front of us.
No, you have the exact piece. She said 12, and I made the motion to change it to 10 as an amended motion.
It was a long motion.
Yeah, no, I have no problem. Listen, remember the days of reading out 100 IDs?
Yes.
Yes, we make mistakes, but.
All right. Thank you, Marjorie. Thank you, Chuck. Okay, so on the amended motion, we will vote, okay? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Marjorie. That motion is approved. Okay, Matt, will you please read Recommended Motion 6B?
Yes, Bobby. I move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve the superintendent's proposed operating budget for the '25-'26 school year of $68,153,339.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Emmett is going to do the discussion.
He's not worried. That's why he's walking away. That's why he's not worried. He knows.
It's all set now, Jim. Thank you.
Light bulb doesn't come out anymore.
Good evening again, everyone. It is my pleasure to present the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26. As you all know, you have been part of this process from the beginning. We engaged in some conversations at the Finance and Operations Committee all the way back at the end of January. We've done multiple budget workshops, and tonight is the culmination of that work. I can tell you right now that we are looking at a increase of 4.95% over the current operating budget, so we're looking at $68,153,339. It's an increase of $3,215,536. So just to walk you through the process, we started with our first budget workshop on Saturday, February 1st. We had bumped the budget upward with an increase of 5.47%, or $3,550,596, which included the following requests: looking at three math interventionists, five elementary security guards, an EL supervisor, administrative position, pre-K expansion, including one preschool teacher, and a speech pathologist for the preschool program, adding a social worker, adding a special education teacher for Silas Dean Middle School to provide us with the continuity across the district, WHS ACAP stipends, as well as the addition of an SDMS in-school suspension coordinator, so as to reduce the number of outside suspensions at Silas Dean Middle School. On February 8th, the board met again for a budget workshop and listened to department requests as well as requests from principals. The budget was revised with the following amendments following up on not only the 8th of February, but February 22nd. We adjusted the math interventionist positions from three to one. We adjusted the elementary security positions from five to three. And then we adjusted the budgetary hours for elementary recess aids. The revised proposed budget increase came in at 4.95%, or $3,215,536. I will tell you, at this point in time, through CASBO, the average settlement of board-approved budgets is budgets is around 5.5%. So we're right within the wheelhouse. Again, as it is every year, personnel is the big one, personal services, salaries and benefits, that is the biggest component. Again, those of you who have the copy, I noticed that the, it didn't copy correctly. So I want to leave this slide up here for a minute. Other purchased services, $400,555. Personal services, benefits, $249,449. Supplies, up $108,250. Property, $58,500. Professional and technical services, $53,800. Purchased property services, $21,510. And then miscellaneous is $7,775.
Can you go back real quick? I probably just might. I think him out, okay. You're good, thank you.
Got it. No problem. Okay. This slide shows the historical budget increases over the course of time, dating back over 10 years. So again, right on target with where we ended up last year at the 4.97. As I've said before, the bulk of our increase is the salaries and the benefits. There's very little discretionary funding within the scope of this budget. Just to give you an idea, here's some district comparisons, both in our reference group, Dirk D., as well as others in the state. There are several districts in the state that actually came forward with double-digit increases. The two that I saw that were the lowest, I saw one increase of .58 and one increase of .59. I would argue that both of those are that low because the districts are one elementary school only. That's it. So it's not a full district. Want to talk a little bit about the per pupil expenditure. You see this every year as well. And you can see where Weathersfield Public Schools is in per pupil expenditures. $19,114 per student, and the average for Dirk D. is currently $21,336. And then ECS entitlements. Just to remind everybody, ECS educational cost sharing is the money provided by the state of Connecticut. It comes to the town of Weathersfield. So you can see things are dropping off a little bit. We'll still see an increase for '25-'26, but the rate of increase has slowed. Also want to make sure that everybody is aware, because we talked about this at the last workshop, excess cost. Excess cost is different from the ECS. Excess cost is a reimbursement with regard to special education services. So as we talked at the last budget workshop, there was discussion of $40 million coming forward to districts across the state to offset the excess cost. The governor did a line item veto of that. However, a deal was struck last week, and that was voted on again by the House and by the Senate, waiting for the governor to sign that. So for Weathersfield, that's approximately $430,000 that we will see. I want to caution everyone, because I know at the workshop, somebody was talking about, well, how will we spend that? That is not for next year's budget. That's for current, this year's budget. So again, what it will do is it will offset our special education costs for this current fiscal year. Again, want to talk a little bit about the district high need students. These are English language learners, free and reduced lunch eligible students, and students with IEPs. Our numbers have gone up since 2021. Again, we think part of that's indicative of the results of the pandemic, but we've been pretty consistent over the course of the past three years. As you've heard, across the state, the special education costs are a major budget driver across the entire state, and it's no different here, certainly. Just want to talk with you a little bit about budget factors in terms of salaries. As you all know, we were able to get all of our contracts that were up for negotiation settled. So we started off with the nurses late last summer. We got the nurses done. We then got the teachers negotiated, and then we wrapped up with secretaries, peer educators, and the addition of 28 tutors who are now part of the bargaining unit. So these salary increases are representative of the increases contractually. We utilized counsel, as well as members of the Board of Education for each negotiating team, and really tried to come in along the lines of where the settlements were across the state. I know with teachers, for example, we came in just shy of underneath the average. We were average with regard to secretaries, peers, and tutors, and a little below average for nurses. So we've got the contracts done. At this point in time, you will not have any contracts to negotiate next year. The administrators will come up next, two years down the road. I want to also point out that excluding the budgetary introduction of all positions, needs, and requests, the total salary increase is just over 3.5, which aligns with the contractual values and the staff placements currently. Again, budget factors with benefits. Right now, ladies and gentlemen, we are still carrying a 6% premium increase on health insurance. My understanding from the most recent insurance committee numbers, the increase is around 3%. And again, with pension and OPEB contributions amounts, that's going to be adjusted by the town. We'll get that later on in the spring. OPEB is other post-employment benefits. Contracted services, aggregate purchase services are increasing 20.76%. Pupil services is increasing $50,000 for contracted specialists providing services to students, which reflect the needs of the district and align with prior-year actuals. Again, there may be services, for example psychiatric services. I do not have a psychiatrist on staff, so that would be a service if a child needed that or needed an evaluation. That would be something that would come out of this line. Just to let everyone know also, total transportation budgets are increasing approximately 3% based on contractual terms and anticipated outplacement routes. As you've heard during the scope of the budget workshops, we have seen an increase in the number of students that were outplaced this year. So with that comes an increased cost. What we do with those outplacements wherever we can is we will look to ride share with other districts, try and defray the cost. Total tuition is increasing $225,000 due to projected enrollment, including an increase in the number of students receiving those specialized services outside of the district. Again, with supply accounts, the increasing aggregate is 8.62%. This is really inflationary. The cost of paper continues to rise. And again, I think the reality here is that we don't see anything going down. So total instructional supplies account for only .71% of the proposed operating budget. That's the interesting piece. It really isn't something that is, we can cut a dramatic amount. Next, '25-'26 budget factors, property. Equipment is increasing 15.96% due to the inclusion of replacement musical instruments. That was one thing that you replaced some of last year. I think we went with a third of what was requested. And again, the mandated purchase of audiological devices for certain students, that's within the special ed realm. Just with regard to budget meetings and presentations, here's the timeline, so you're aware. The Board of Education conducted budget workshops on February 1st, February 8th, and February 22nd. The superintendent's proposed budget being presented to you this evening. And the board-approved budget presentation to Town Council will take place this coming Monday on the 17th. We have the townwide budget hearing on Monday, April 21st, right here in council chambers. And the Town Council, BOE budget allocation must be made no later than May 15th of 2025. And with that, I'll take any questions. I know you guys have gone through this pretty exhaustively, so again, happy to help out.
Anybody, Marjorie?
Just to go back maybe a couple slides, just to see if you could explain to people, and I know you've told me this, but I can't remember the exact answers. What is aggregate purchase services? And that seems, that's a 20% increase there.
Yeah, so that would be purchases related to, I'm trying to think, various, like, supplies, materials. It might be related to, off the top of my head, I'm trying to think, 300 and 500. Marjorie, let me, let me go and get my budget book here.
Yeah, it says object codes 300 to 500.
300 and 500, yeah. That should be in the binder.
Okay.
I don't have that right in front of me.
I do. I can put it.
He's just doing this.
Anyway, while we're waiting for that-
Yes.
Liz can look at it. The other question I had was the tuition increase, is that, would that be covered by excess costs?
It depends, it depends, Marjorie, on the specific placement. Excess cost doesn't kick in until you've reached 4.5 times the per pupil allocation. So it will depend. For some of our higher dollar placements, more involved placements, we would meet that threshold and get reimbursement with excess cost. Others, we may not.
Right, okay. And then my final question is, there's that way back in the slides where it was talking about changes. I don't remember the conversation about adjustments for recess aids, and I just didn't know what that was. If you could explain that.
Yeah, the recess aid, the adjustment there, what we looked at is we looked at the actuals and what we budgeted, and we have tended to budget lower than what the actuals have been. Obviously, for us with the recess aids, they provide a huge service with regard to providing support in the cafeteria, monitoring behavior, monitoring lunch. And then those lunch aids also go out and support the kids during recess. One of the challenges we have is a lunch aid cannot be paid out of the cafeteria fund unless they are performing a function within the cafeteria. So when the lunch aids go out and they become the recess aids, we have to cover them out of our budget. So that's the delta there.
But do you literally cut it, like their time, their hours in one way?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
So then it was just a readjustment of that, because you looked at the numbers again about that?
Correct.
Is that why? That, okay.
Yep.
And it was adjustment up, like adding?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else have a question?
I don't, go ahead, you can go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check also, an increase in substitutes for teachers, for sick leave act or anything like that, is that included in the budget factors for salaries? I know that that was just something that has come up in some committees, I just, I-
Yeah, historically, that's a good question. Historically, we have seen an ever-increasing rise in our subunits, and it's not only related to that and that change in the law, but let's remember, we did the NEAS report, and one of the things that the NEAS report talked about was the need to write new curriculum. So we've seen an increase in the number of subunits as we've had departments go out for PD opportunities. So that's something we continue to monitor. And again, overseeing a lot more of HR right now with the departure of Mr. Donahue. So I'm watching, you know, the number of personal days that come in and the number of requests for absence. So it's something we're going to continue to theme to watch at this point in time. Historically, the subnumbers have tended to go up. I would imagine that we'll see an increase. Also, I know that the legislature talked about making some adjustments to that law. I don't know at this point in time if that's etched in stone.
Madam Chairperson? Just so people know, the 300s, we had that question, is, are his purchased professional and technical services, it's so loud, which is performed by only persons or firms with specialized skills and knowledge. The 400s are purchased property services, which is operate, repair, maintain, and rental properties owned and used by the schools. And the 500s are other purchased services, which is an amount paid for services rendered by organization or personnel not in the payroll. So, and that's coming straight from our website. We have a great business manager book that's about 70 pages long.
There you are. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
I've read it many times.
Matt?
Yes, thank you, Bobby. And thank you, Michael, for presenting this budget. I always like sitting through your budget presentations. I like the graphics, like the way you explain them. I don't have a question at all, but I just wanted to make a couple points, a couple generalizations for anybody that may be listening or watching about this process and about some of the items that are in it. First of all, I just want to say that this budget process is a democratic process. And when I say that, I don't mean that it's just, it's the nine of us up here making decisions and thinking of what should go into this budget. That's far from the case. We sit up here and we hear from students, and we hear from parents, we hear from teachers, we hear from departments, we hear from principals, we hear from directors, we hear from the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and we try to process all of that information and craft a budget that we think mirrors some combination of what we've heard throughout the year and years. This isn't just up here, us up here throwing darts at ideas on a board and coming up with items in a budget. It's a very democratic process. A lot of people have a say in it. Secondly, of this budget, the 4.95%, about 3.7% of that is salaries and benefits, increases in salaries and benefits as negotiated with our bargaining units. Say what you want about collective bargaining and about having to employ people in unions, but in the state of Connecticut, in public schools, it's a fact of life. It's only going to happen. I feel like that 3.7% increase of this budget that goes towards that is a fair amount. You cannot go to the bargaining table with these units and suggest them taking a 0% raise. It's just not going to happen, and we don't want it to happen. These are valued employees. We want them to feel valued. We want them to feel compensated. But to suggest that we could do better in bargaining, I don't think that's the case. Over the summer, I was involved in numerous meetings with these bargaining units, and we went back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and we ended up with numbers that were at or below state averages for the most part. So I think we did well in terms of that. We gave our employees fair raises that weren't overly burdensome to the taxpayers. So I think we did well in that sense. And then finally, a lot of the things besides the salaries and benefits that we're asking for, the additional items, the additional spending. Weathersfield Public Schools is not any different from schools across the country and across the state. I can imagine that a lot of boards of educations are asking for a lot of the same things. And the things that we're asking for and that they're asking for are in response to societal changes and societal demands. Things like social workers. There's been an uptick in the need for social workers, not just in Weathersfield, not just in Connecticut, but across the country. Security, there's an obvious increase in the need for that across the country. Special ed, obvious increase everywhere, in every district. Pre-K, we have had add a line item in our budget this year because there is a new state mandated age for when kids can enter pre-K. Math interventionists, math scores are hurting in this district, but we're not alone. They're down everywhere. EL, we have an English language position in this budget. We really can't control the type of languages that are being spoken in Weathersfield. And in fact, we value the diversity of the languages that are spoken in Weathersfield. They just need to be organized. So I mean, all of these things, we heard from everybody in this district, we've been hearing throughout the year, we heard for the past years, and that's how this budget was crafted. So that's just my two cents, generalizing and saying why we're asking for what we're asking for.
Thank you, Matt. Well said. Any other questions for Michael?
Thank you, Liz. Thank you.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
I saw the educational cost sharing number. Is that 14? It's $14,800. If you go back to the slide, it's the educational cost sharing number.
There you go.
Yes. So it's not, it's only a couple hundred thousand that you're sensing, or is this what you, because I had seen where it would be over 15 million, but you're seeing that it's definitely going to be a lot less than that.
At this point in time, yes, that's a projection.
That's a projection. Okay. So it's another moving target. Okay. I just wanted to-
Got a lot of those.
No, I understand. Everything's a moving target. It's one of the difficulties in doing this job is the state, we have no idea what the state's going to give us, and-
Again, I think the other thing too, even thinking ahead two years with the next biennial budget, the governor in his line item veto was more focused originally on $54 million to districts and had that go out and be dispersed in the '26-'27 school year, the second year of that budget. So again, it's a moving part. But the reality is, and we've said it before, and I've said it to you since I started here in 2008 as Director of Special Services, special education is the wild card. So it's one of those things that we monitor, and you know full well, we have added quite a few programs over the course of the past 13 years. I know the Transition Academy. You know, I think about the number of students that we're able to keep in district, the ABA program, the LEAP program at Webb. I could think about the STRI program and seeing kids that were going to be outplaced and- and end up being able to stay in district with their typical peers. That's exactly what we want. So we've built a lot of programs, and again, for the trauma-informed, you'll see in the budget, the request for that special education teacher at the middle school allows us to carry on the trauma-informed program at the middle school and then the natural transition to our Bridges program at the high school. So.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Michael.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to a vote on this? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can we have a roll call vote?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought we had to make the motion before we could discuss amongst us, or?
The motion was made.
Motion was made, so discussion's happening now.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ellen, second.
I'll second.
Tell Ellen just to wait to this.
No, there's no, there's nothing to second, there's no motion. The emergency motion's on the table.
Roll call vote.
I asked for a roll call vote.
Okay, a roll call vote. Thank you, Ellen. Ms. Callan Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
No.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez-Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Ms. Walters?
No.
Mr. Weiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lacavoli?
Yes.
Chair Granato?
Yes.
So we have a yea vote, six, six yes and three no. Thank you. So that motion is approved. Okay? So we'll move on? We all set? All set? All right. This evening, we do not have any presentations. We have Board of Ed meetings held, and we have, our first one was the Board of Education and Town Council Joint Meeting. Now, this is new this year. On Thursday, February 27th, the leadership of the Board of Ed, the Superintendent, Michael Lemond, and the Town Council with Town Manager Fred Presley, who was absent that day due to illness. But we meet every monthly, on a communication meeting. This is the focus of that. There was a review of the previous meetings we've held. We also discussed shared services. The meeting continued with discussions on the budget and the building committee, and the minutes for this meeting are available. Our next meeting is Thursday, March 27th at the Town Hall, and the public is invited to come, but you cannot comment during that meeting. Thank you. And our next meeting, Human Resource and Personnel, Christina?
Yeah. Thank you, Bobby. We had a committee meeting on March 3rd. We mostly discussed the previously mentioned code of stability, a way to more effectively communicate. I did invite Town Council to our next conversation. Many public buildings have a code of stability, and this is to promote appropriate communication. We were, it was an idea that came about in a committee meeting. I do want to remind everyone that the committee meeting agendas were taken from previous shares, so it's not, those were not topics that I just created, these are topics that were done before. We were not able to discuss the secondary school surveys discussion, but we are going to just push that to the next agenda. We're also hoping that we can meet with the business manager to discuss the staffing hiring update, absences and leave of absence update, as an interview commons, and so we're hoping that we can change the time for a little bit earlier so that way it could accommodate their schedule. Other business was just a discussion of professional development calendar, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Student Programming Services, Janice?
We always have such, a lot of information at these meetings, and I try to condense even further the minutes, but at times I will be referring directly to the minutes. So our meeting was on March 4th, and the committee heard about the school improvement plans for Emerson Williams, Hamner, and Webb Schools. Excuse me, Emerson Williams reported that they're working more closely to align their work on supporting student behavior and social emotional growth to their academic SRBI process. SRBI stands for Scientific Research-Based Interventions. This will better enable staff to make informed decisions on the best way to support students. Also, at Emerson Williams, the Courageous Conversations Committee has led work to promote inclusion in the school community. Examples of this were the Hispanic Heritage Event, a slideshow of which was presented to the full board last fall and was very well received, and Black History Month last month. During Black History Month, every class participated in school-wide projects resulting in learning about prominent people of color and their significant achievements, and coming up on March 28th, they will host a cultural night event. Still on Emerson Williams, Jen Cardes and Ray Emanuel, two teachers, reported that their professional goal of empowering students and fostering student leadership has resulted in the two of them stepping up to advise the 5th and 6th grade student council. The student councils for one of their activities chose to collect and distribute 394 boxes of much-needed cereal to donate to several different organizations as a community project. Students have, are also, also learning to facilitate restorative circles and have asked to have reinstated the Safety Patrol where they keep students safe while transitioning in the hallways. Then at Hamner School, they have as their goal to ensure positive school climate and culture. Toward this goal, collaborative planning time has been revised to ensure that all staff is able to be included in the ultimate goal of benefiting student learning. And also, the students at Hamner initiated a school kindness committee, which has run a food drive and made Valentine cards for seniors in nursing homes. They, also the 5th grade at Hamner, received a grant from NASA to visit the Connecticut Science Center. At Webb School, in order to improve equity, some teachers chose an inclusion goal, let's see, to support more targeted inclusion for students in the LEAP program in the Unified Arts classes. Through this goal, teachers learn how to best deliver their curriculum so that all students may access skills being taught. Also at Webb, following the book, following up on the book, The Anxious Generation, Webb will host a screening of Screenagers for parents throughout the Weathersfield community to institute the Wait Till 8th movement, which is to hold off giving children smartphones until the 8th grade. And that evening, I have that in my WEC notes, what the date is, I think it's the 19th. I'm pretty sure it's the 19th. So, and also at Webb, as part of an empathy goal, some teachers are collecting stories from students, families, and staff from which they will create a slide deck called Our Web Story to share with the community. Yeah. So last on our agenda, a member of our Student Programming Services Committee, Christina Hernandez-Williams, also on the board, is also on the Town Traveling Tribute Walls Committee, which is working with the Chamber of Commerce to bring the walls to Weathersfield September 10th to the 12th. This committee would like our schools to have the opportunity to participate in this great event. So our curriculum leaders have been put in touch with the Chamber of Commerce Director to discuss their involvement. Being that this takes place in September, right at the beginning of the school year, does add a challenge for sure, so school leaders and teachers will make decisions based on what they believe is feasible and appropriate. But it certainly is an opportunity for students to be engaged in what I'm sure would be a very memorable experience. So, and I just want to thank all the teachers who, meeting after meeting, use their own time to come and volunteer to inform us of all these great things. We really appreciate the value of their time and all the information that they have to share.
Thank you, but don't go away.
No.
We had our Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, WEC, yesterday. Janice, you're on again.
Also, this is hard to condense, but the goal of WEC is that all Weathersfield children birth to eight are healthy, developmentally successful learners and connected to community. First on the agenda was a list of things that WEC wants to get the word out about. So number one, parents are encouraged to register for their child for kindergarten before May 1st, 2025, and if you have any questions about screening, please go to wpsweathersfield.me. And parents, please understand that registration isn't automatic because you reside in Weathersfield. You must register your child so that we can be aware that your child will be attending. Also in that vein, they wanted people to know about the Summer Success Transition to Kindergarten Program. This is a free four-day, two-hour-each-day program designed to create a smooth transition to kindergarten. While children are enjoying this kindergarten preview, caregivers have the opportunity to learn more about Weathersfield Schools, town programs, and resources. It will be at Emerson Williams School. Also with kindergarten, the kindergarten readiness play dates will be held at all five elementary schools in August, one on August 1st, another at, on August 16th, another on August 30th. Families will have an opportunity to meet before the school year starts, as well as their children. And other things that they want us to get the word out, the human library is coming to the library. This wonderful program is on March 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and 14 people will be available as human books that patrons can borrow. The books will be sharing stories and dialogue about their experiences related to prejudice. So it sounds really exciting.
What's the date on that again?
That is March 29th. The human library.
Where?
At the library.
They were describing it, it's very interesting.
Oh, it really, really sounds great. And then they also mentioned Screenagers, which is going to be screened at Webb School on March 19th at 7:00 p.m. All parents are welcome to attend the viewing of this film as a follow-up to The Anxious Generation. Also, WEC continues to gather ideas for play and non-screen activities to bring families together and foster interests and abilities beyond our screens, and also it's good for our social and mental health habits. And then very, really wonderful guests that we have had, I thought was, this was really exciting, Chelsea Kent, she is the owner of Turnpike Laundry Room in Weathersfield. She came to share that she's very interested in being a contributing member of our Weathersfield community. She has experience hosting play dates at her laundromat while parents are doing their laundry, and she has books and games available for young and old. Once a month, she would like to, and has, at her other business in Southington, offered a free night once a month, a laundry night for homeless people, as well as providing a gathering space for senior citizens. But I just think that is so generous of her.
Oh, it was.
And she has many ideas and is open to many ideas of other ways that she can be of service. So she's going to be a valuable resource.
It was a wonderful meeting, and as we always say, to have a great school system, you have to have a great foundation, and that's our foundation, is our WEC. Very good. Okay, you're done. All right. Meeting scheduled, we have Community and Public Relations on 3:12 at 5:40, correct?
I think Mr. Weiner has an update for us from the Building Committee.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I know, it's tough to follow Janice, though, so.
Go ahead, you're on.
I helped you out, though, John, so help me out, have an abbreviated version of your update.
Appreciate that, Chuck. I'm going to make it longer.
Okay.
Just for you.
But I helped you out, either way.
John, I'm sorry I missed you.
That's okay, Bobby. We'll talk after. Advisory School Building Committee meeting was held here in Council Chambers just yesterday. At the beginning of the meeting, there was a new chair of the Building Committee nominated and approved. I hear he's a great guy, loves to play golf. No, I'm just kidding. It was me. All jokes aside, it's unique to be chairing that committee as well as a member of the Board of Ed. It's, I've said it here many times, it's a very important project to me and to this board, so I look forward to working with the community and all of you as we go forward. Let's get these schools built. Second item I'll talk about is public comments. It's great to see the public out, regardless of opinion. There's some gentlemen here tonight that was there yesterday as well. It's great to hear all sides of the argument, right? It's part of our democracy. I said it last night, I'll say it again, it's great to see, even though there's heated debate on either side, it's great to see the public out and taking participation in our democracy. Give you a little update of what's going on with the committee. So TSKP did present their tentative schedule to reach a referendum date of September 23rd. It's a lengthy schedule, it will be posted on their website with all the minutes from last night as well, but I'll give you a few key dates. This Board of Ed will receive a presentation from TSKP in the Building Committee, April 22nd, right now will be the date that we receive that. 22nd is the meeting date, correction, right? So April 22nd will be the meeting day here, we'll receive that. The Building Committee will obviously receive that presentation prior to that, on April 14th. Of that initial plan so far, what was presented last night, TSKP went through so far the preliminary, I'll say, I don't really want to use it, but concepts of a plan for their Phase, Phase 1 of a two-part referendum, which included what the new Hamner School would look like on the Stoneman property, what Webb would look like renovated as a 5-6, which I was very happy to see included, the auditorium renovation, which is so desperately needed. I know our plays in town would appreciate that as well. And then Charles Wright, somehow sometimes gets lost in the translation of all this stuff going on. The renovation plan, or tentative plan, preliminary plan of Charles Wright being renovated looks great. I'm very happy to report that we can renovate that school to new. I think that was big for this community. There will be a meeting in the near future, no date scheduled yet with the Historic District Committee. This will be an exploratory meeting between TSKP, the Building Committee, and the HDC. This is a meeting to get their requirements, what they want to see if we were to build on that property, just so we can get the initial conversation going. I myself live in the Historic District, I know the process can be, can be lengthy, so it's good to see that TSKP is willing and the Building Committee is obviously willing to meet with them ahead of time to get some of that preliminary requirements. And with that, that is all I had for Advisory School Building. Was that long enough, Chuck?
It was perfect.
Okay.
Everything you do is perfect. I appreciate it.
Who's the guy again? Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm glad we heard you win. All right.
Can I just say one thing also, that that meeting was videotaped, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, let me, yeah, let me clarify that. So it was videotaped here. Most of the meetings are going to be held here. There is some talk about trying to figure out if we can have a more informal setting for our Building Committee meetings, will recordings. Recordings are very important, we want to make sure recorded, but the nature of the Building Committee, I'm more into the collaboration of the community with it. So we're trying to figure out if this space stays, there are some scheduling conflicts with this space on most nights, so we're looking at different options, and I'm working with Sally Katz in facilities to do that.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, we have meetings scheduled. Community and Public Relations is 3:12, 25 at 5:40. I asked that already, Marjorie, isn't that correct? We changed the time?
Yeah.
Okay. And CRET Council is on 3:19 at 11:30, and Finance and Operations before our next Board meeting, 3:25 at 6 o'clock. So is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Come on up to the podium and state your name and address. May I remind you that you have a five-minute limit.
Polo Sello, 32 Hartford Avenue. I will encourage all of you guys to go back and listen to the public comment section of the meeting last night. There is a growing and extremely organized opposition to the placement of the swing school, and we just have to face the reality that that poses an existential threat to the referendum that you guys are looking to put on the ballot. Couple of points. The uncertainty that the location brings to the referendum, I think, should be a catalyst for thinking differently about where the school goes. When you introduced the Historic District Commission, John lives in the Historic District, I do, I've spent hours debating wood and muttons. I paid three times what I would for a front porch because I had to have the wood milled by an artisan to match what I had on there. And to think that we're going to tear down a structure and... And to think that we're going to tear down a structure and put up a brand-new building that doesn't seem to kind of fit the mass incising of the neighborhood, I think is introducing a ton of risk to the referendum. But also, the State Office of Historic Preservation will be involved, the State Archaeologists will be involved, and unfortunately, all of those things pose risk to getting our children renovated schools to learn in. I'll maybe talk a little bit about our democracy. We voted on Keisha Farm. Three uses of that farm were recreation, sports fields, open space, and municipal purposes. Yet, it was dismissed as an option, and if you please go back to the, get the date, late November 19th, Town Council meeting, the consultant said Keisha Farm, looking at it from a building opportunity, represents a big flat site with good access on a couple of public right-of-ways. When pressed why it was not further being considered, the response was that the community is unsettled with what to do with the property. That is such an objective observation, and one that we're hearing, they were told to stay away from the property. That is not democracy. Democracy is a referendum, where we chose to have open space, athletics, and municipal purposes. There's also a consultant that works for TSKP, that is a Weathersfield resident. Is he part of friends at Keisha Farm? Is he influenced by his neighbors and his proposal, and their proposal on where they put this property? This reeks of conflict of interest. Our kids need new schools. Putting a school in the middle of where it's currently being proposed is almost a recipe for its failure, and litigation, and red tape, and complexity, and I don't know who to talk to. Is it the Building Committee? Is it you guys? Is it the Town Council? I've requested transparency in the process, which we haven't gotten yet, so I'm gonna come every time here, talk to you, and talk to them, and talk to the Town Council, until we screw our heads on right and figure out that putting, and go back and look at the plans. Look at the little tiny rectangle they have for the kids to play in. It's a parking lot, building, road, road, and the recreation space for the children. I don't know the dimensions, 30 by 60? I don't want my kids going to a school like that. I know the town doesn't want their kids going to a school that's surrounded by four roads on every single side, where we can have a beautiful new facility set back in an open field with plenty of opportunity to leverage that space for open space, additional fields, and the consultant has talked to us about it's the best value for the town. So we're choosing a location that will drive more tax burden on our community over a location that we proved it for municipal purposes. For what? I can't answer that question. I can't answer why we're doing that. And until we get those answers, you're gonna have a growing opposition. And while I hate to say this, because I'm an advocate of the school budget and renovations, I will personally vote no. I know there are a ton of people who are in the same boat, and so we have a choice in front of us. Do we choose a location that is perfectly suited for a new school? And the second point I'll make, you looked at, you need a referendum to take Hamner down. You're proposing the renovations in two referendums. You're gonna have one to build it, one to renovate a couple more schools, and then you're gonna have to go to a referendum for the second phase of this project. What if the referendum doesn't pass? You're gonna be stuck with two schools right next to each other? How's that gonna work? It's not gonna work. There's no certainty in your 10-year plan. You're putting, you're making a decision on the first school.
Okay, I'm just gonna give you a...
Yep. On the first school without contemplating all of the implications that it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, are there any board comments?
Hi, Bobby. I have some, please. So last week, I had the pleasure of working with our Transition Academy and their business that's called Cards for All, and I was able to purchase quite a few, so I want to hand them out so everyone can see what they look like. These cards are amazing. If you've ever been to a museum shop and you see the beautifully, you know, handcrafted cards there that sell for $15 or $18, the price point, I think it's less than $4. I personally think they should sell them for $5 or $6 or more, but their price point, I believe, is $3.50. These cards are just amazing. I'd just like, if we can all hold up our cards, you know, once we pass them down so everyone can see.
Sure.
Oh, you want one? They're just amazing. And I'd just like to read to you a little bit about the Transition Academy and something that they are working on. So the Transition Academy is part of Weathersfield Public School System. WTA works with students who have intellectual, emotional, and development differences, and these students have fulfilled their academic requirements for graduation but need experience with respect to employment, life skills, and educational community outings. Everything they do is funded by proceeds from their business Cards for All and from what they receive in fundraisers. The project that I worked on with the WTA last week was called a Pitch Deck, and the intent of a Pitch Deck is so that when they're talking to potential investors or potential businesses where they might be able to put their card corrals to sell them, that they can tell, you know, who they are, why they're doing what they do, what they enjoy about it, and what they'd like to do to grow their business. And I will put in a little pitch for them that their business includes needs for a Cry Cut machine. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. I've been too busy to craft recently. It's like Cry Cut something, it's, and the papers and some of the tools and these plastic bags that they go in. So if anyone is looking for a donation, I know of a place that would gladly take these items, but I just wanted to give them a shout-out. They're just such a tremendous group.
I was here and I wanted to talk, and I told them, can I talk?
Could we please sit down right now? It's a time...
Sit down, I will wait patiently.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you after...
No, no, I want to talk in front of the microphone. I live in Weathersfield, and I came for the public part of the hearing, I already announced it, I just went to the bathroom, sorry.
Okay. So, you know, for anyone who's looking for these cards, I personally want to work with the WTA to get more card corrals out there. They take Venmo, they're just incredible, so just wanted to give them a shout-out because they certainly deserve it. You know, the other thing I wanted to share regarding the school building committee, or project, rather, you know, I do love all the public engagement, you know, John, that you had referred to as well, and I think one thing that's showing, you know, crystal clear is that Weathersfield is behind a, you know, a supported new school renovation, whether that means renovate as new, you know, regardless of what they do. I think the town is all, you know, backing the importance of the schools that are needed, and I do hope that something can be worked out so that the referendum is successful, you know, especially considering the concerns that have been raised, but just wanted to share that. The last thing I'll talk about is the budget, and I do apologize, I wasn't, I didn't realize when I should be speaking, but, you know, Matt, I agree with everything that you said regarding that Weathersfield is facing, you know, similar issues to what we're seeing nationally, you know, the need for security and the need for social workers, you know, the list goes on. And I also agree that we really work together very well as a Board of Ed in this year's budget workshops. We asked a lot of great questions, and we were asked questions, we worked very collaboratively on this, and I really do appreciate that experience. You know, one of the things that came out of those workshops was that our focus for the budget and adding positions with that, is that they would be child-facing positions. And I agree, we do value diversity, we do value that we have, I think, either almost or a little over 400 EL students in the Weathersfield Public School System. But I also think that timing is everything, and while I would love to support the addition of positions, I don't think this is the year to support the additional position of an EL Director, because the EL Director will help to organize us, for sure, but they're not child-facing. And I would be more in support of supporting an additional math interventionist than what was currently proposed, because they are child-facing in addition to the organization and expertise that they provide. And I'm also in support of five security guards. I know that, I think we put forward three, and, you know, safety is always a concern for our children. It's a concern nationally, it's a concern locally, you know, it's just not the same as it was, you know, back in, when I was growing up and certainly others. I don't think you can ever be safe enough, and when I think about child-facing positions, I do see the security guards as child-facing. I also see them as an extension of the leadership teams or the administration teams that run the individual schools that can help out, you know. There was recently a pipe burst in the nurse's office, you know, wouldn't it have been great to have a security guard to help, you know, pull that, you know, kind of settle that, you know, whatever the reaction was, kind of set up some sort of organization around it so that our principal didn't have to get involved or other members of the administration? I would be more in support of not funding the EL Director position this year at $150, almost $150,000. And I'm also not in favor of the in-school suspension for Silostein Middle School. While that is child-facing, I do see other things that to me are a higher priority, so I would like to see five security guards added instead of the three. I would like the EL Director taken out, I would like the in-school suspension taken out, and I would like to add a math interventionist. So those are my thoughts on the budget, things that I'm hoping that we can achieve.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Matt?
Yeah, so once again, I think I did this at the last Board of Ed meeting, I want to thank everybody up here for their work on everything, whether it's the Building Committee, whether it's committee work, whether it's the budget, whether it's the superintendent search. We have a lot of tasks in front of us, and I appreciate all your work on everything. I appreciate everybody's opinion up here on all of those items that I just mentioned as well, and I always appreciate it when the public comes and speaks and offers their input. It might not seem like we're always listening, but we are, but it's always good when the public can reach out to us.
Anyone else? Janice?
My comments on the budget. First off, we do have two coordinators in our EL department who do not have a full caseload of classes, they are not able to be as child, as student, hands-on students as they would like to be. A director would help with that. There comes a time when a long-term solution can't or shouldn't be put off. More EL teachers or tutors are fine, but they're not long-range solutions. So my question would always be, if not now, when? I'm not seeing or anticipating that next year there'll suddenly be a lot of money for an EL Director. It won't be any easier, that would be any easier. I don't think it'll ever be an easy lift. But right now, it would serve the students to have someone who has the authority to ensure quality instruction and can be responsible for the immense amount of paperwork required by the government, and someone who can also see that identification is correctly made for EL students when it comes to special ed. We have more students in special ed who are in EL than maybe we actually should have, and that would be a savings of money. Also, this director would be someone who is available to guide and support staff and retain good teachers. It's time to do this, and as Liz said, there's, we're talking about 400, nearly 400 students, so we have a responsibility to serve the educational needs of all children, including the one-third of our student population for whom English is a second language.
Thank you. Marjorie?
Hello, I just want to do...
Oh, I'm sorry, can I make?
Sure, go ahead, you have more?
I have another comment, I'm sorry, can I do that? All right, I went to the Charles Wright PTO meeting, so this is fun stuff. Their PTO is very busy fundraising and running special events for the school community, there's too many to mention, but they did have their big fundraiser of the year, which is to collect a variety of items to bring to Savers, it's on the Berlin Turnpike, Savers pays for the items. So the Friends of Weathersfield Library donated many CDs. Kim and Steve Bobbin and Polly Moon helped to transport many items to Savers, making this a community effort. So, and also, the PTO has trained some sixth graders to run the school store, the Hawk Shop, completely independently, completely on their own, and this has piqued the interest of other sixth-grade students who have asked to be trained, and the sixth-grade students who are currently doing it are training them to do that. So it's just wonderful that the student leadership isn't just a school goal, but, you know, the PTO is really encouraging that.
Okay, thank you. Marjorie?
On that same note, I just wanted, I'm thinking a lot about volunteers, and one of the things that's revving up again this year is the Volunteer of the Year, Weathersfield Schools Parent Council Parent or Caregiver Volunteer of the Year Award, and every school nominates a parent or caregiver who's done a tremendous amount of volunteering the last year, and their nominations are going out now, there should be a link sent through every PTO where anybody can nominate someone they think is deserving and who's done a really good job with helping their community, their school community. And there's just so many people out there doing that right now, there really are, and I was thinking about, you know, WEC is in the middle of organizing with Kim Bobbin and Jessica Coelho, you know, play dates for kindergarten, new kindergarten kids at the end of this coming summer, and they have to plan it now, because, you know, they need to get all their ducks in a row. And there's a lot of collaboration, and so they, she, both of them come to the WSBC meetings, where, which, at that meeting, it's once a month, and Mr. Emmett arrives to report kind of what's going on in the district, but for the rest of the meeting, it's one person from a PTO from every school that just hears what's going on, and we also collaborate and talk about different things happening and ideas and fundraising and issues, and... But one of the things that came out was that there is a parent who's going to volunteer to help organize all the play dates, that I believe she's a volunteer from High Crest, and that's just a tremendous thing, you know, that someone's going to do that, and I kind of wish I could do that, actually, because I miss my kindergarten age, but there's so many people in this town doing a lot of really good things behind the scenes that people don't even realize in just planning and getting permission to be at the school and making sure people hear about it and the flyers and all the things that go with that. There's a lot of people doing that that are not being paid, and they're just doing it because they want to do it and they want to help out. So I just want to shout out to all those people out there who are kind of not getting all the kudos, but we see you. And also, just to remind you, if anyone sees someone like that and they, they're like, I'd like to nominate someone at the middle school, or I'd like to nominate someone at Charles Wright, you know, you fill out the form, it's a really easy Google form to fill out, to send in a name and just a, you know, quick explanation as to who they are and why they deserve that award. And I also want to talk about...
Anna?
How I also went to see Hello Dolly, and it was amazing, and I also see from that musical, a lot of people volunteering as well, and teachers helping out with costumes and other things, so it was a beautiful performance and funny, and it was just great, I was just really impressed, and so I wish they had another weekend of shows.
Okay, how are we doing? Anyone else? Jim?
I just wanted to make a comment on the Weathersfield Transition Academy, they're also trying to open up a storefront on the Silostein Highway, so that's something they're working on. As for the budget, it was a very cooperative process, and I appreciate everyone's efforts, but I do agree with Liz that security is a priority, and these schools, the elementary schools are not going to be built for several years to come, so I prefer to shore up the security sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, I just wanted to comment, Marjorie, when you were talking and others were talking about all these volunteers, you know, it takes volunteers to keep our village running here, and it really does. We have so many people who don't get honored but continue to help us, so I thank all of them, too. I did get a chance also to see Hello Dolly, and... And if you ever watch the Weathersfield Marching Beyond Walk in the Royal Day Parade, you get chills. Why get chills through this whole performance? Because those are young people up there doing this dramatic play, and you would think they had done it for their lifetime. They're so good at it. They're so comfortable up there. So, a standing ovation to all of them. And Silos Dean Middle School this week has Beauty and the Beast, and I find an interesting piece on this, is that there's a, help me here a little bit, Caroline, there's 103 actors?
Over 100, yeah. I'm not sure of the exact number.
And one of the ideas we have about why this mass of students is because of the Keene Foundation Theater performances. They've come very versed in how to put on a play, so thank you again. And also, High Crest is doing, what was it, Shrek, Shrek this weekend, too. So, it's a busy theater weekend. And the Board of Ed spent another all-day Sunday in an interview session for our Superintendent Search. The updated report is that the progress continues, so please stay tuned to any further announcements, and thank you on that. So, Angelika, can you fill us in on life at the high school?
Yes, I have a lot of exciting updates. So, a couple of weeks ago, one of my best friends and I, we hosted Culture Night at Weathersfield High School. We've been planning this for months, and it was well-attended. There were many countries that were represented, and there was even a salsa dance topped by one of my best friend's dance teacher. It was awesome, and it really brought people together. As we've talked about, Hello, Dolly, it went amazing. They put on a spectacular show, as always. And last week, our DECA club, a lot of us competed in the state conference, and there were many finalists, and a lot of us, two of those finalists, were going to Florida this April at the international level, or national level. And then, there was also Mr. Mosher. He takes a group of seniors to, like, help build houses with Habitat for Humanity, and they went last week for, like, the spring session. So, yeah, these are some exciting things that I wanted to share.
Great, Habitat for Humanity. That's wonderful. Excellent.
Chairperson, I have some comments. I wanted to wait for Angelika because I didn't want to steal her thunder like I do every week, so I do have some sports updates. So, ESPN is here. Boys hockey won today 4-2, so they advance on to the quarterfinals for Friday night. That's the first time advancing since they won the championship three years ago. Girls hockey had a 3-0 tough loss to New Canaan on Saturday night. That was in the semifinals. And I know the girls' basketball team had a tough loss last week in the first round. So, our sports, and I believe I talked to Mr. Maltesi today, we have, dance is going to a championship, and so is cheerleading this weekend. So, there's a lot of great things going on at the high school. I also wanted to talk about the budget. I guess, without getting into specifics, it's kind of disappointing in my 10 years of being on the board, we've never had a budget vote not be bipartisan. So, I felt like we were invited to the table and not listened to. We submitted a very thoughtful counterproposal that was not taken seriously by the other side. I think we could have came to a budget that we all could have agreed to. Safety was our number-one concern. We wanted to make sure there was five security guards in that budget. But as people have said to me, the council will probably cut, and we'll have another hack at it. So, hopefully, we do, and hopefully, we can get it right this time. Liz shared something with us, and I just want to read the quote on it. I liked it. "Take time to enjoy the simple things in life." It's a good reminder. And finally, I found a quote, as we're in budget season and we're talking about teaching and learning, from John Dewey, the American writer and philosopher. I thought it was very fitting for Budget Night. "If we teach today as we taught yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow. Education is not preparation for life. Education is life itself. The primary purpose of education is not to fill the mind with facts, but to teach one to think." So, I just thought that was very fitting for tonight's budget. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. You stole my thunder on quotes here now, and I stole it from Liz. Thank you. So, as we do build for our future, we're full of quotes here. This is a quote about a hard-working Board of Ed. "If everyone is moving forward together, then success takes care of itself." And we are a very hard-working Board. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
No, I would like to speak...
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thank you all for joining us tonight. Our next meeting is March 25th. Thank you.
I would like the cards back.